I call to meeting, meeting of Pasadena School District Board Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, April 28th, 2020, by telephonic and our video conferences. In accordance with suspension of certain provisions provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, is authorized by the Governor of Texas and the State Attorney General at 5:30 PM. First President, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Kenneth Fernandez, Mr. Vic Morgan, Mr. Fred Roberts, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Ms. Marsha Okahno, and myself, Marshall Kendrick. As the record indicates, the quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and it notices this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Ms. Sullivan, would you do the invocation, and Mr. Roberts, would you do the pledges?
I will. Would you please bow with me? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for the many blessings of this day. Even though we've gone through extreme hardships in some situations, we know that thou art near and dear to each and every one of us. We pray that you would be with us as we go through the business discussions of our district, lead and guide, direct us, and give us understanding of thy will. We thank thee for our leaders of our school district, and appreciate so very much the diligent work that they've done during this time of pandemic. We pray that you would lead and guide and direct us as we go through this other business of this meeting. Keep us ever in the center of thy will, forgive us where we fail thee. These things we ask in my name. Amen.
Amen.
If you would put your, oh, that's, I'm sorry, this is my Pasadena hand cleaner. If you would put your hand over your heart, please, and do the American pledge first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, same hand, same heart, the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state under God, one indivisible.
And let me put my P I S D hand spray thing back in my pocket. I'm ready.
All right. We're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551074. For the purpose concerning the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer, employer to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee concerning matters related to superintendent's recommendation to hire administrative personnel, and/or the superintendent's recommendation related to renewals, non-renewals, and terminations of contract for professional personnel. 551.071, to consult the district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district would call to professional responsibility, treaty conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act, to seek the advice of his attorneys about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will convene into executive session and return an open session at 7:00 PM. We're going to reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. We have special recognition. Dr. Powell?
Yes, board members, we would like to do this on Zoom this month. We've got some special recognies. We'd like to first start with our great campus leaders for Young Elementary School for their recognition as the grand champion, that's right, grand champion, of our district's Dream Box Campus Challenge for K-4 mathematics. And one of our great Pasadena ISD teachers, I'm not being able to speak tonight, one of our great teachers here in P I S D, Ramon Arias from L F Smith Elementary School, for his classroom recognition as the grand champion of our district's Dream Box Grade Level Challenge for K-4 mathematics. So I'm going to turn it over to Janet Nuzzi, hopefully she'll do a better job speaking. And she is our Pasadena ISD Elementary Mathematics Specialist. She does a fabulous job every day here in Pasadena ISD. So she's going to help us recognize our outstanding educators for the awards they're getting tonight. So Janet, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, well, thank you, Dr. Powell and board members, for allowing us the opportunity to recognize and celebrate the students and teachers of Pasadena ISD for their efforts during our 2020 Dream Box Math Challenge. And I think we have someone pushing our slide forward, yes?
Dr. Hickman is trying.
Okay.
Let's see. You got Mr. Roberts. It's not moving yet, Janet. Give us just a, there we go. We're a little low here.
Okay, we've got it. All right, well, during the months of January and February, the students across our 36 elementary campuses competed in our district's Dream Box Math Challenge for K-4 Mathematics. The students at Young Elementary School completed 25,930 Dream Box lessons over the course of four weeks, with students demonstrating a 20% growth in mathematical proficiency. With the majority of our students at the other campuses completing between 10,000 to 13,000 lessons, the 25,390 lessons completed by the students at Young Elementary School is an accomplishment. Let's celebrate Amy McClellan Principal, Belisa Castro Assistant Principal, and Kristi Pace Mathematics Campus Coach for their campuses' recognition as the 2020 Dream Box Challenge Campus Grand Champion for Pasadena ISD.
Thank you, guys. Hi.
Hi, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. We're definitely excited.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
And the 22 students in Mr. Arias's first grade classroom completed 4,348 Dream Box lessons over the course of four weeks, with students demonstrating proficiency and multiple standards. With the majority of our top 10 classrooms in each grade level completing between 1,100 to 2,000 lessons, the 4,348 lessons completed by the students in Mr. Arias's classroom is an accomplishment.
Aye, thank you.
Let's celebrate Mr. Arias for his students' recognition as the 2020 Dream Box Challenge Classroom Grand Champion for Pasadena ISD. And, Dr. Powell and board members, we are also excited to share that since our district began facilitating distance learning on March 16th, the students across our 36 elementary campuses have completed more than 402,000 lessons on Dream Box and demonstrated a 20% growth in mathematical proficiency. And that also is a wonderful celebration. Thank you.
That's phenomenal. Thank you so much. Great accomplishment.
We've got great mathematicians here in Pasadena ISD, and we appreciate everything the teachers and the administrators do to follow the lead of Janet and her team. And of course, Dr. Hickman is cheering you on in the background here, so congratulations. We're very proud of everyone involved. We're going to move to next recognition, and this is going to be our regional and state Texas Academic Decathlon Competition winners. This past February, Pasadena High Schools participated in the Texas Academic Decathlon Competition, and at the end of the competition, medals were awarded to the participants. This year, the award ceremony for Pasadena students took an unusual turn. So I'm going to introduce Pat Thurmas, who we all know and love, Director of Advanced Academics, and she will show you a brief slideshow to show us what happened.
Okay, Karen. Okay, next slide. Here we go. Okay, due to a software glitch, medals could not be awarded to the students at the regional awards banquet. Pasadena students were disappointed but understanding, and district administrators at the ceremony offered to have a delayed ceremony for the decathlon teams. Students requested a banquet at Whataburger. So in the can-do spirit of Pasadena, the Whataburger banquet became a reality. And in our next slide, where's my Vanna? Okay, this is the Pasadena team arriving at Whataburger. And notice they brought a thank you poster. They were most appreciative of what the Whataburger team was doing for the students of Memorial and Dobie. And this was at the Whataburger on Fuquay, so we all need to partake. Whataburger's there because Whataburger absorbed all the cost of this banquet. It did not cause Pasadena a dime. And this is the Dobie team enjoying their Whataburgers. And notice that you can see Bob Dottery and Todd Guerras at the head of the table supervising the festivities. And the next slide, this is our Pasadena Memorial team. And all the students also received a free coupon for another Whataburger so they could come back at any time. And in the background are two of the three coaches. There was Kevin Ackerman and April Lance. And then in the next slide, you will see Mr. Richardson, who congratulated his team and also enjoyed his Whataburger. And this next slide is the Pasadena team after the state competition at the, after the award ceremony. The team consists of Saria Gillian, Sakita Meti, Megan Dryden, Joaquin Cantor, Linda Castillo, Zaire Webb Atkinson, Vincent D'Angelo, Alina Garza, and Ashley Porter. And then this is the formal picture of our Dobie team. And I want you to realize that Dobie and Memorial were two of the teams of 40. The top 40 teams are allowed to go to the state competition. So we're very proud to have two competitors. And in this formal picture, you will see Fraken Shakobi, Sebastian Doggato, Ian Sisneros, Mintu, Amy Hong, Tronbu, Amy Chu, and Sedal Martinez and Kobe Thompson. So we are very proud of this group of students. So thank you very much for your support of the program.
Congratulations. We're very proud of them.
No, you should be.
They've done a wonderful job. Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
They got to go to state right in the nick of time before all our travel ended, so we're proud of both those teams, their coaches, and of course, their administrators who support them day in and day out. And then last but not least, we want to recognize some of our Pump, Pass, and Kick USA winners. So we're excited to announce that we have several students who competed in this year's National Pump, Pass, and Kick Event. So I'm going to turn it over to Amber McNeesh, our awesome PE Health and Wellness Coordinator, and she's going to celebrate the winners for us. So Amber, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Powell and school board members, for allowing us to recognize the Pump, Pass, and Kick athletes tonight. This year, Pasadena ISD's Pump, Pass, and Kick overall winners advanced to compete in the National Pump, Pass, and Kick USA Event held in Louisiana. The event includes a punt, pass, kick, and a 40-yard dash. The event drew 76 competitors from four different states, and Pasadena ISD had four students who finished among the top three in their age group and one student who came in fifth place. Please join me in congratulating our students who placed nationally. In the boys' 8- to 9-year-old division from Red Bluff Elementary, Eddie Lopez came in third place. In the same division, Isaiah S. Ronconcio from Moore Elementary placed fifth. In the girls' 10- and 11-year-old division from Millstead Middle School, Gabrielle Course finished first overall. Mia Garza from Sullivan Middle School came in second place for the girls' 12- to 13-year-old division. Also in that division, Mackenzie Garner from Keller Middle School came in third place. A big congratulations to all of the winners. We would also like to recognize the principals, PE teachers, and parents that supported their student in the Pump, Pass, and Kick program.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Yeah, as we close, I would like, if you're a Pump, Pass, and Kick winner or a parent, could you please wave at us so that we can see you on the screen? Woohoo, I see a bunch of you. Congratulations.
Very good.
And then if you are a PE teacher or an administrator that supported Pump, Pass, and Kick, would you guys give us a big wave? We can't do these kind of programs without you, so we appreciate you. All right, go Pump, Pass, and Kick. I'm super proud of all of our athletes that placed nationally.
Thank you so much.
Great job. Thank you, Amber, and thank you to our amazing athletes. We see a big future here in Pasadena ISD and their athletic abilities and going further in school and doing great things. So thank you all for being here tonight and recognizing these individuals, because I know this is not our normal way of doing things, but we sure, it makes our heart feel good to see them, see their faces. So there are no public comments, but I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Kendrick, and you can take it from here.
Okay, we're going to go to the consent agenda. There are two things we need to pull. One is on page 58, one is on page 63. They'll come back later. So pull 58 and page 63. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Jack. Any comments or discussion? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Personnel section is for information only. Education section. Consideration and possible approval of general waiver from the Texas Virtual School Network Course Review Process for Pasadena Virtual School Course.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Hernandez. I want to call you Hernandez. Can I answer questions?
Every time.
Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval in structural materials adoption selected for high school English Language Arts, needing E L A R, and English for speakers of other languages, E S O L, courses on proclamation in 2020 for middle school language acceleration programs and for grade three phonics instruction.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Fernandez. Any comments or questions? Hold in favor, say aye.
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 Motion opposed. Motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of 2020, 2021 Student Code of Conduct.
A move that we approve, the 2020, 2021 Student Code of Conduct.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Morgan.
Um, I have a problem, obviously, with boys wearing earrings. I just don't think that we need to open that can of worms.
So Darla's on here as well. She brought this forward. It was suggested, this is our process, parents, students, and staff can make suggestions to changes to our student code of conduct to a certain period of the school year where we cut that off, and then we take it to DEC. I was surprised that no one at DEC spoke up to have those same sentiments, and so I took it to the principals. And what I found in my surveying of principals was our most seasoned principal, including our newest principals, were in favor of not, not keeping it like we've had it in the past. So that's why it's here before you as a board today to make a decision on. We know we've had some media in the Houston area on this topic, and I, you know, have my own personal opinions, Ms. Morgan, like you do, but I remember that I don't just represent myself in this. So we did go through those steps, and Darla, do you want to add anything to that as far as the process or the input that we received through DEC?
I can't hear you, Darla.
I did take forward the rationale that had come forward.
Can you get real close, Darla? We're not being able to hear you. Get real close.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I did take forward the rationale that had come forward and the proposal from the campus level to DEC gave multiple opportunities for discussion and feedback, and there was no opposition that was expressed at that time.
Well, in my opinion, no opposition is not, not reason to change it, anyway. That's just my opinion.
Marshall?
Yeah.
I'm in. Sure. I, I don't want to take away the earrings. I mean, I don't want them to wear, I don't want the young men to wear earrings. And that's my personal opinion. And, and I think you start giving a little bit away, and the next thing, they, they want a little bit more and a little bit more. There's, we've changed, we've come a long way from wearing uniforms. And I don't know if it's been better or not. And I understand the reason why they don't want to hassle about the earrings, because they're tired of writing the young man up and sending him to the office and so on and so forth, and I understand that, but it's just one of those things. It doesn't really matter what your mama and dad says is what you're supposed to do. What, what, the earrings are not a positive thing for the young man. It's just a fashion thing. And I would hate to know that this board voted on fashion and not for, for the, for the real reasons. It's a discipline thing. When they go off to work, depending on the job they take, I will tell you, maybe I'm a bad person, but I don't, the men in my office don't wear earrings. They look professional. And I wouldn't want to send anybody else out there looking like that. And so I will vote, when it comes, if it comes up to a vote, I will vote no on the earrings. And I apologize for the fact that, that the principals or the teachers have to send them to, to the office. But you know what? You got to learn how to live in the society you're in, and so that's where I'm at.
Well, and the thing is, it's not just the earring. Before you know it, it's, it's the gauges. And it's, it's where, it's where you, where they take it, you know, it's, we don't allow it. It's not part of a uniform, so. You give them an inch, they take a mile.
And definitely the gauges and the other.
Can I hear you, Deanne?
There's principal discretion in all of our student code of conduct, so we did talk about the gauges. Again, it's the process that we've had in place through the history of DEC to take it to DEC, for them to have a say in it. And we do have a board member that represents during that time as far as observing and hearing the feedback. And so we did have Mrs. Sullivan there that day. And, and I agree, quiet doesn't always mean that you're in favor or not in favor, so that's why I took it to all principals, all levels. And I did not find one principal who stated differently than what DEC had shared. So again, we just bring it to the board. And my question would be to Jody, if the board doesn't approve that part of the student code of conduct, can they approve the other changes? Because there were very few. I know some strikeouts and some highlights. But do you want to give guidance on that if there's a vote that shows they're in favor of parts and not all?
Certainly. If there's a pending motion on the floor, then we can amend that motion to essentially approve all of it with the exception of that single change to the dress code. If there's not a pending motion on the floor, then a motion could be made to approve it all with the exception of that. And I'm so sorry, I did, I missed the, whether or not there is a pending motion. Did we have a motion?
There is, yes.
Okay, so in this particular situation, then yes, I would need to, if that were the way that the board were willing to go, then a board member would need to make a motion to amend the current motion and reiterate out. I mean, I could type it in chat if I need to.
That's okay.
Just in language.
I got it. Mr. President, I move that we amend the original motion, leaving in the statement, males are not permitted to wear earrings of any type.
Second a motion.
So now that we have a motion and a second, Mr. Kendrick, we will need to ask if there's any discussion and take a vote on that amendment. If the amendment passes, then we will, that will become your new motion, and we'll need to open it for discussion and take a vote on it.
Okay. Any discussion on this motion and second?
Marshall?
Yep.
Deanne, did you say that the, the principals had discretion in, in which part of this they, they enforce, or did I misunderstand that?
No, it says fads come out. We can't predict what the new fad will be. I remember the year, the feathers and the hair. So they just have a discretion. There's a kind of a catchphrase in here that will address fads and fashions that come through that we couldn't have predicted and need to be addressed because they're distracting to the learning environment. And that's our focus, is the distraction or the disruption to the learning environment as we go through this process.
So, so do we think a kid wearing an earring is a distraction to the learning process among the kids or among us? I mean, that, that's a question I have for y'all. You know, I'm. I'll answer that question. Yes, a distraction. The reason you wear that earring is, is to attract attention, and it'll depend. The next thing you know, how are you going to define between whether it's an earring or a gage or whatever the case? Jack, that's just the start, my friend. And if we, if we loosen up on this one, you might as well just back off and just wait for the, for the rain, because it's part of the start. You know, I think, are we enforcing the colored hair, Deanne?
No.
And, and my whole point of this, and you don't have to answer that. I know we're not. You know, I, I see kids with all kinds of colored hair. And I don't think the kids notice it. I don't, I don't think the kids notice a diamond stud in a boy's ear. I, I don't know. I'm not a kid. But I do know that, uh, I just, I, I'd hate to see us like, I think it was Barbers Hill where the kid moved schools because of his hair length, you know? So. But that's, but that's his personal option. If a kid moves school because he doesn't like the hair length, that's his option. But the thing is, you cannot change the balance in which you're at. If the teachers or the principals are not following the, the rules as far as hair colors, that's not an issue for us. That's an issue for the superintendent. And so all we're supposed to do is vote whether or not we want to let the young men wear earrings or not. And if a majority of the board says no, then knows the answer. But they don't, they don't wear it not to be noticed, Jack. You and I both know that. They wear it to be noticed. You cannot convince me. It's an individuality type of situation. It's because they want to be noticed. And once you start, they storm the beach, they stop there, and once they can, they advance further.
And in my business, in my business, it's either, you either wear the earring or you don't wear the earring. And then it's, that's the struggle, you know? Because you either allow them to or you don't. And if I don't let them wear the earring, then there's no issue at all. Then I don't have a problem with that employee whatsoever.
You mean the girls?
Well, these are employees. Let me, I'd like to say something here of kind of what Jack said. We used to have a code on sideburns, length of hair, and also color of hair. And at one time, when somebody had their hair colored, it was a total distraction. But over a period of time, there's so many hair colors that hair color is not a distraction anymore. It's just not even recognized. I kind of feel the same thing about the earrings. If it's a distraction, that's one thing. If it disrupts school, it's one thing. Pink hair, green hair, and blue hair doesn't distract. I don't think earrings distract. I think it's so common with them, it doesn't make any difference.
Can they wear green hair?
Sure they can.
Wait a minute. Let me ask the superintendent. Let me ask the superintendent, Marshall. Deanne, or the kids, can they wear green hair or any color hair they want to?
The rule is, hair must be neat.
I can't hear you.
I don't know what's wrong. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Hair must be neat, clean, well groomed, and may not have shaved designs. Everything else in principal discretion. That's correct. So it's not a matter of what we were discussing earlier. It just needs to be neat, clean, and well groomed, not have shaved designs. Sideburns must be neatly trimmed and must not extend below the ear level or flare at the bottom. No type of head coverings or hats.
Well, I apologize to you then, Deanne. I'm glad we are enforcing it.
We're not. It didn't say that. It didn't say that. It said trimmed and groomed. It didn't say anything about color.
Marshall? This is Nelda.
This is Nelda. I could not get in when you all were talking about this earlier. And I was the representative that stayed for the hour while this issue was discussed. I was shocked that there was not, uh, more discussion against it. But you have to remember, you only have two people from each school layer. And since we have more elementary schools than we do any other schools, this didn't necessarily affect those particular, uh, groups of kids. But the statement was made that the boys were wearing earrings and they were covering them up with Band-Aids. And then after the teacher took the roll or whatever, they would take the Band-Aids off. Uh, so, uh, you know, I didn't participate in the discussion. It's not my place to as a board member. I simply listened to it, but I agree with some of the rest of them. We've given and given and given, and pretty soon there will be no reason for us to even have a test phone.
I call the questions.
Question, the vote on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Personal vote. Cause I can't hear everybody.
Is that, is the amendment to leave it in or to take it out?
Take it out.
Take it out.
To take, to not have the earrings, right?
Right. Nelda, you put your hand up if you don't want the earrings in. There's one, two, three.
I can't, I can't see everybody, Fred. I'm gonna ask Jack.
I, I, I vote leave it like it is.
Kenny?
Leave it like it is.
Vicki?
I vote to, um, leave the boys not able to wear earrings. If you leave it like it is, what, what my question is, if you leave it, are you saying you're leaving it as it is in the, uh, board book?
Yes, as it's presented.
Yeah.
Amendment, we're voting on the amendment. We're voting on the amendment, whether to approve the amendment or not.
So I vote yes on. I vote yes on the amendment.
I vote yes on the amendment and I'm sorry.
Marshall, would you read the amendment again for me, please?
The amendment is to leave out the change in earrings to go to no earrings. Not what the new policy says. It's to exclude that earring policy that we will not allow earrings. That's what the amendment is.
Okay, so I vote no then.
Are you vote no amendment?
Yeah.
Kenny?
I vote yes.
Vicki?
Who? Yes, I vote yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Nelda?
Yes.
Maricel?
Yes.
That's five to one. And I vote no. So amendment passes. Okay? So it comes out.
So now you have to vote on the original, or on the amended motion, which is to approve the student code of conduct with the exception of the, um, edit to the dress code provision about earrings.
Okay, we'll go back to original motion.
No. Not the original motion, is it?
We voted on the amendment.
It's the amended motion. So now that you voted to yes. Sorry, you vote.
Great, Jody.
I was gonna say, you just voted to amend your original motion. So your original motion was to pass the amendments to the, or the edits to the student code of conduct. You amended that. So now the motion before you is to pass the amendments or the edits to the student code of conduct with the exception of the edits to the dress code specifically regarding earrings.
Everybody understand that?
Yes.
It's not like a bunch of lawyer talk to me, but with the original motion, we have voted to amend the, the original motion about approving the dress code with the amendment that says we will not accept the change in the earring. Okay? Is that simple enough? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No.
Just to be.
Motion passes.
Just to be consistent.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna comment to you, okay.
I appreciate the conversation, y'all.
I do too. Thank y'all all. Appreciate it. Consideration of possible approval, whoop, I just did that one, didn't we? Okay, we have a lot from CTE.
Well, Tanya Maygiriff here, and of course y'all all know Tanya and she's gonna give us a presentation or spotlight on CTE.
Can't hear you.
I don't know what happened. We were zooming fine, but I guess you're having problems.
Hey, we're doing good.
Okay, we got all this stuff. I don't see Tanya, but.
Will you see me?
For tour.
Okay.
I was just taking my earrings off.
Me too, Tanya, touche.
I was just a little, but I got it off now.
Well, good evening, board members and Dr. Powell. It is an honor to be with you this evening to share some of the amazing work that's taking place in career and technical education that is changing the lives of many of our Pasadena ISD students. I'd like to start out by talking about the number of students involved in CTE across the district. Current enrollment is 10,631, which means that 70% of all high school students are enrolled in at least one CTE course. As you know, we offer them a wide variety of courses to choose from that fall into 32 different pathways. Everything from maritime to health science and cosmetology to culinary. In CTE, there truly is something for everyone. As you know, student organizations play a large role in CTE as we work to develop future leaders. This year, we had a record 422 students advanced to a state level competition. Just two years ago, that number was 200. So you can see the growth that has occurred in this area. Fortunately, due to COVID-19, most did not get to participate in their state level competitions. However, DECA students from Pasadena Memorial and Sam Rayburn, along with VEX Robotics teams from Doby and CTHS did have an opportunity to compete and all had students qualify for international competition. Doby High School had additional international qualifiers in FCC LA and HOSA. And although these students did not get to attend their state competition in person, their scores from online testing and regional competitions were some of the highest in the nation. We always start the year on a positive note with the Pasadena Livestock Show and Rodeo and this year was no different. Our district FFA students raised $42,600 in scholarship money. Another big win for FFA came from Pasadena Memorial High School student Madison Lafield, who placed third at the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo in a floral design competition. This was a first for Pasadena ISD. We were just getting started with certifications when we left for spring break, but one of the most exciting numbers we saw came from South Houston High School. 30 of their health science students earned their EKG technician certification. And they still have another group of students who will test this summer. One of the most exciting internship experiences we have had this year involves CTHS student Heaven Deleon. She is currently interning at NASA and is designing the wheels and gearboxes for the lunar rover that is being launched in 2024. Amazing. You all know the success of the CTHS welding program. Well, their students are still going strong as they swept the competition in Skills USA and independent competitions for the sixth year in a row. Much of the success can be attributed to their instructor, David Gutierrez, who is not only a phenomenal teacher, but is also a phenomenal person. This year, he was named workforce development instructor of the year by the Associated Builders and Contractors in Construction and Maintenance Education Foundation. David was also selected as the Region Six CTE Educator of the Year by the Career and Technical Association of Texas, as well as CTHS's Teacher of the Year. And speaking of Teacher of the Year awards, I have to brag on our CTE teachers. This year, 50% of the awards for Teacher of the Year at the high school level went to CTE teachers. And 33% of the new Teacher of the Year awards went to CTE teachers. So I am extremely proud of them and happy to see that they are getting the recognition that they deserve. Our automotive collision students from CTHS and small engine students from Sam Rayburn High School walked away with scholarships and some really nice tools at the Top Tech Challenge sponsored by Universal Technical Institute. And board, thanks to your support, we were able to move David Scarsella into a full-time robotics position this year, and it has already paid off in a big way. The district robotics numbers have more than doubled this year with the addition of multiple middle and intermediate school campuses. Our long-term plan is to have robotics at every campus in the district as we strive to expand STEM education. And with this growth, also came more success by the high school robotics teams. The CTHS VEX Robotics Team 231X was honored with the Excellence Award, which is the most prestigious award given in the entire state. And CTHS's first robotics team won the Excellence in Engineering Award and both of these were first for the district. More good news from CTHS came from their culinary team. They competed in Landry's Junior Chef Challenge at the St. Louis Hotel in Galveston and walked away with the top prize. While they were thrilled to win the top prize, I think they were most excited about the fact that they beat Deer Park. And because of your support, we were able to reopen the welding lab at Pasadena Memorial High School to serve the students at Memorial and Tedler. And enrollment is through the roof. We have well over 100 students who are able to enter this pathway and are on their way to earning an industry-recognized certification. CTHS's ag program is now an official FFA chapter as they presented to state officers a couple of months ago and received their state partner. And lastly, Pasadena Memorial High School archery student Grace Oriano was featured in an international publication where she documented the impact of being involved in the outdoor education and what that has meant to her in her life. So board members, I truly could, could talk all night about the successes of CTE and, um, this is just a small piece of the good work that's taking place in our department across the district. And none of this would be possible without your support. So thank you. Thank you all for seeing the value in these programs and for understanding the life-changing opportunities presented to our students when they complete a CTE pathway and graduate with a certification. The board members and Dr. Powell, thank you again for your time and for your continued support.
Thank you, Tanya. Great report. Great successes. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Consideration of possible approval of ratifying the superintendent's approval and execution of the 2020-21 Region Four Regional Day School Program for the deaf shared service arrangement between Pasadena ISD, Texas Education Service Center for Region Four and other state school districts.
That's some move.
Second.
Voice from Mrs. Morgan, second from Mrs. Sullivan. Any discussions or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of superintendent's acceptance of the grant award and execution of the special education physical support performance contract between Pasadena ISD, the Texas Education Service Center of Region 20.
Some move.
Second.
Voice from Mrs. Morgan, second from Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
Deanne, where is Region 20?
Well, that's a good question. I know 13 is up near Austin. And Debbie, are you on here? Will you share where Region 20 is?
I am not exactly sure where Region 20 is. It, um, it is a grant that we received from Region 20 for, um, specialized physical support. So I, I think it may actually be, um, in, uh, in San Antonio. San Antonio, yes.
It's the service center that is, um, being used by TEA to service that grant.
Everyone is saying San Antonio, San Antonio.
Okay. Yeah. So every, every, um, service center specializes and that is the service center that specializes in deaf education.
Okay. Thank you.
San Antonio is your final answer?
Yes, that is my final answer.
Okay, good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the superintendent's action to join the Region 20 Special Education Supports Purchasing Corporative and execute the corresponding interlocal agreement between Pasadena ISD and the Texas Education Service Center of Region 20 in San Antonio.
Some move.
Second.
Voice from Mrs. Morgan, second from Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
That's a lot of money. It should do a lot of things.
No joke, it's a good deal. Out of eight, consideration of possible approval of the application for a TEA waiver from the, from the CPR instruction requirement due to COVID-19 for all high school graduating seniors who are unable to complete this requirement.
Some move.
Second.
Voice from Mrs. Morgan, second from Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the 2020-21 Texas Education Agency's School Safety and Security Grant Award in the amount of $862,301.
That's some move.
Second.
Voice from Mrs. Morgan, second from Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
That grant is a tremendous amount of money.
Yeah, it's good to have that. Wonderful.
I was told we were able to apply for it and we're very pleased to get this money to help make us safer.
Wonderful. This grant department continues to do wonderful things. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Amendments, we've already had the decathlon situation, no policy. Financial section, budget amendments?
A move, we approve the budget amendments for March.
Second.
Voice from Mrs. Morgan, second from Mrs. Sullivan. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEE, number A dash 001 for the Sam Houston High, excuse me, Sam Rayburn High School Tennis Court and Site Improvement Project.
Some move.
Second.
Voice from Mrs. Sullivan, second from Mrs., motion from Mrs. Morgan, second from Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA, number B dash 1001 for the Sam Rayburn High School Tennis Courts and Site Improvement Project.
Some move.
Second.
Voice from Mrs. Morgan, second from Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
Kevin, are you on here?
Yes, I am.
Brad, I'm here.
That, what sort of, uh, that's a, that's a lot of money to miss on a drainage deal. I was just curious and I meant to call you today, I apologize.
Sure.
Where is that?
Uh, that's over at where the new tennis courts have been poured. When we first did the demolition of the, the earthwork, we got into some of the roots, some of those large oak trees that we were trying to preserve. So we ended up shifting the tennis court down to avoid the roots. And, uh, that extended some of our drainage. Also got into some soft soils that we had to bring in select fill for extra cost. We thought it was good to try and preserve the trees.
Thanks, Kevin.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, Kevin. Did you say you had to move the location of the tennis courts?
Correct.
How mu, how far?
Uh, I believe it was roughly 10 feet to the north. It was pretty, pretty insignificant, but we just needed to get away from the tree roots.
That wasn't determined when the first, or the first, uh, observation for the contract was determined?
Not the location of the roots. I don't think they knew the extent of the, the root system.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just real quick, Marshall. Did we do any type of soil samples or anything before we, we, uh, determined all that?
Yes, we did. Yeah, we had TerraCon, TerraCon, our testing lab did a geotech report.
But none of that showed up, bad soil or any of that?
Um, no, it didn't show up in that area.
Is that the test that they performed, was it a test that that should have shown up?
Well, since we. Well, since we shifted the tennis court, it kind of got away from some of the original boring locations. So we had, we had some new soils that weren't tested.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion. Consideration of possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 16 for the new Red Buff Elementary School Replacement Project.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 17 for the new Red Buff Elementary School Replacement Project.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the Budget and Design Service Agreement for Bondi Elementary, excuse me, Intermediate School HVAC Upgrade Phase Number One Project.
Some move.
Second.
Who's that? Jack? Second by? What? It was Kenny. Mr. Hernandez, right?
Alis.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any comment or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of construction contract to Brown and Root Industrial Services for the South Houston High School Auditorium City Replacement Project.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
I think it's time.
Oh, listen, the last time I went to employ there, the seats were so awful. I was ashamed of the people I had go with me.
Well, I know it's, I know it's time.
We love you, Andrea.
We've got representatives from Bondi and from South Houston on here and excited.
Awesome.
There you go. Good for both of y'all.
That's adorable.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of real property change agreement between Meritage Homes of Texas LLC and Pasadena ISD for the future site of the new Thompson Intermediate School.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Roberts. Was that Roberts or Kenny?
Hernandez.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any comments or questions? At least we're moving on. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Any comments on construction? Pretty detailed this time. How close are we, Kevin, on, uh, going out for bids on the, uh, maintenance, the new maintenance place?
Actually, we received bids today and
Oh, yeah?
we will read them publicly tomorrow in a, in a Zoom meeting. But, uh, yeah, we've got some real good activity on it. I think we've got nine or 10 large general contractors that are bidding on it.
Great, great. Fantastic. Good to see that carried out. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Already done it, I think.
Yeah.
Double pass. That was just a question about construction. I'm sorry. Got ahead of myself. Okay, we have more, more, more public comments? Set the date for the next regular meeting, Tuesday, May 26th?
I move that the next regular meeting be Tuesday, May 26th, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. We're going to adjourn into a closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074. The purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employer, after hearing complaints or charge against a public officer, employee, review the superintendent's evaluation, and consider board member's self-evaluation. We'll be going to a separate executive session for this, and we'll come back and reopen when we get through with both those evaluations so we can close properly, okay?
Thank y'all for being here.
Absolutely. Thank everybody.
Stay safe.
Thank you. Good night.
Night, y'all.
Night.
I move we adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, we adjourn, second by Mrs. Keanu. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank y'all so much. We're adjourned.